I have five on the line. We went a little over on the first session. So if you could please like call this meeting to order. At this time, I will give the invocation and I would ask Commissioner Orshin to pledge allegiance for us. If anyone would stand, please. Thank you, Lord, for this today of mercy and grace. And thank you for the opportunity, Lord, at this day that you've given us. And I pray as we gather here to be able to work about the business that, Lord, we do for the people of this county, that, Lord, you just guide us, direct us, help us, Lord, to see the things and of all things on an issue that, Lord, we might make the decision that is pleasing to you and the decisions are right. I thank you, Lord, for the hour that you've given us, the country in which we live, and pray for those that are serving our country. Ask for their safety and their families, Lord, as they remain behind. Two, Lord, we pray for our leaders at every level of government and asking, Lord, that you give them wisdom and knowledge to govern. Now, Lord, as we proceed, we just want to thank you for this day and the blessings that you've given us. Just have a great. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda, please. I believe there's some changes the board would like to ask us to make.
If we could, I would like to add as number five A, Glenn Mulehausen to the chamber.
Okay.
And then on the action items, I have a public records amendment to the policy that I'll go over in discussion if you would like me to, and then approve the community health assessment priorities. That would be in the action.
That'd be in the action items?
Uh huh.
You'll ask approval of the two priorities?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get these down. And the other was what again?
Public records.
Public records? Yeah, I thought that was on here.
Yeah, I don't think it was. It just came in actually today. I had mentioned it earlier before we started meeting. And Alicia Farren will be coming in to close on her behalf.
Okay.
For personnel.
All right, any other suggested changes? All right, we have motion to accept the agenda as presented changes?
No.
Have a motion? We have a second? Second. All right, any further discussion? All approved? All opposed? Thank you. This time we'll recognize Glenn Mulehausen. You're number five A.
I'm number five A.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. I appreciate your time and I'm here on behalf of the Grand County Chamber of Commerce and I want to present Commissioner Edwards and the rest of the Chamber of Commerce with this certificate of appreciation for the support that you gave for Winterfest, as Lord, we know it's you.
We appreciate you, word. This is for the board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do this. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. This will go up in the.
Yes, sir.
Allison Scott. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Appreciate how well worked you out, so we all did on that as well. It was a very noticeable group effort. Great. All right, this time we recognize Mr. Rebecca Garland for the financial report, please. Oh, sorry?
I did not approve the minutes.
I did not approve the minutes. You're five A.
I wasn't saying.
No, you got it.
I wasn't pleased and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk, for the order on that. At this time, I would like to ask for motion for the approval of the minutes for the workshop meeting and regular meeting of January 22nd, 2013.
Motion.
Have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion on those? We've had those minutes up to date. All right? All approved? All opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Now, this time we recognize Rebecca Garland for our finance report. I think you've given us a packet on that, too, didn't you?
I have several things to go through this evening. Hopefully, I'll go fairly quickly. The first item is our financial highlights through the end of January. Our final cash balance in our general fund checking account was $5,464,000, which is up from $5.1 million in January. So I was really pleased with that. And you'll note that this time last year, our cash balance is $4.654 million. So we've had some gains in our cash balance, which I'm so very thankful for. That's on page one. If you'll flip to page four. Actually, I'm sorry. Flip to page two. I forgot to highlight this on my computer. I apologize. Our tax collections. We received $738,753 in current year real property taxes for the month of January, $9,600 and some change for the prior year tax collections. For total tax collections, flipping the page, we're at top of page three. For real property in the month of January, $748,365. That's a little higher than the month of January last year. If you just flip across the page to 723 and some change, then we did do a little better in our tax collections this January versus last January. And our DMV continues to climb at $24,170 versus $20,000 right at this time last year. So if you want to flip all over to page four now, that brings our total property tax collections for real property for the year, $4,757,664. We are tracking a little bit behind as far as, no, actually, we are still, we're staying pretty little naked naked. We are a little bit higher than this time last year at 71,000 collected this time this year versus last year. Our DMV collections are 165,000 rounded up and we're $8,600 ahead of last year. This brings our tax collection rate to 92.01%, which is a pretty good figure for the end of January. I'm very, very thankful to the taxpayers of Grand County for being so diligent in paying our taxes. Now, that looks a lot higher than this time last year at 88%. Part of that is our levy was a little lower this year than last year because we had some property going to increase the use value, pulls it out of the tax base, and we have some conservation easements as well. That's a new provision in the Machinery Act that allows people to pull them out for, pull property out for what they call conservation. So that has kind of deleted our tax base just a little bit more. So that's one reason that our collection rate looks a little higher. I wish I could say that it's just all because of collections, but it's because our tax base has lowered a little bit. Page five, if you'll turn it over. Our total revenues received for the month of January were $1,507,000. And I'll reference back to this in just a moment. We did receive our temporary allocation from the U.S. Forest Service, about $1033,000, which is included in that. However, I went ahead and I've gone ahead and paid that to the schools.
How much was that, please?
$191,000 to the schools on Friday, which is included in our expenditures. I'm going to get the crew yet. So our expenditures for the month of January were $1,192,000 with a surplus for the month of January of $315,000. If you'll flip to page six, you'll see that our year-to-date surplus is $2,469,000. You'll see it begin to go down very shortly. Our year-to-date surplus this time last year was $2,000, $2.5 million, as I anticipated. We have a tight budget this year, much tighter than we have. We've always had a tight budget. It is really tight this year. And so I wish I could end the year with that kind of surplus, but I know it's not going to happen. We have about a million more in revenues this year, which part of it is transit RA money and a million in expenditures, which a lot of it is the RA, about half of that is the RA transit facility revenues. If you want to flip our sales tax report, our collections for the month of February, which is we received it February 15th, which are actually collected in December, were $93,500. That was a little lower and I received an email from the North Carolina Department of Revenue that told me it's going to be lower this month. And part of that is because they issued refunds of sales tax that we or other entities pay in and then get back from the state, which pulls our allocation down. It looked like the town of Robbinsville had gotten a refund, which is a higher amount right now because of all of their capital projects. So that did affect our sales tax. Right now, we are showing a positive variance of about $49,000, which means we collected about $49,000 more in sales tax this year as opposed to last year, which is helping with the revenues. Any questions on this report?
Well, Glenn's here and two of the traveling tours and folks. This is really a reflection on folks coming to Robbinsville. And I so appreciate that. I think it's been a real concerted effort on that. And I'm just going to wait and say this. My family drives on empty to get back here to buy gas. We try to buy more here than paying eventually $5 down on gas. We need to go to Silver. So, you know, I've seen the signs everywhere of a transport bottle. Thank you.
Okay, our next report is just our budget analysis by department report. We are running very tight on the budget at this point through the end of January. Most all departments are within budget, however, a few departments I am projecting to be slightly over budget. Part of the reason is some unanticipated, like for instance Recreation, they had to refurbish all the helmets this year. Jason in hope that he could put it into next year's budget, but they would not pass the helmets and so his, he's got a little bit of an overage on his budget. However, the pool budget I'm projecting is going to be under budget, so I'm hoping that the pool will cover that issue. Senior Center is also projecting to be a little over because we've had such an increase in the demand for meals. We've got a lot more seniors coming out for meals during the day and also more need for meals on wheels. On the jail, I'm anticipating they're, it could go either way. We've had some pretty large medical bills and even though we've gone with Gil's Bar, you know, a couple of helicopter rides to Asheville really added, and so it's really difficult for them to stay out of them. And Health Department is a little iffy as well, however, they're showing a surplus overall. So, and I'll elaborate on that a little later. So overall, the budget, our target percentage is 58%. Overall, we're at 55% usage on the budget, so you can see it's just nip and tuck. And all departments have been getting their budget reports for the end of January, probably in the morning, with a memo just saying, let's stay the course and tighten the strings as much as we can and, you know, let's not do any unnecessary spending. Questions on the budget? And I've got my reports, if you want to look at them. I've always got them available in the office for you. I do have one budget amendment that I forgot to tell Kim about, which you have done the agenda. It's budget amendment number 16. As I stated, we did receive about $12,800 more in temporary receipts than what the U.S. Forest Service had predicted. So I'm amending that budget up. Schools actually received $10,283 more in their allotment than what we anticipated. And then the balance goes to the five fire departments, which those allocations will be made. So this budget amendment is just to recognize the additional revenue and expenditures. Of course, the county doesn't get to keep any of it. We just, we just pass it through. So that will need to be in action. If the board pleases. The rest of the information I have is just informational in nature. I was supposed to bring this last board meeting and I just left. This is the final, this is kind of a taking the hundred-page audit report and pulling it into about 10 pages for the Board of Commissioners. I thought it would be interesting and I've made it available for the public as well just to peruse. And I think I announced this last meeting that our fund balance percentage as a percentage of expenditures for June 30th of 12 was at 22.51%, which is much higher than the 8% rate a few years ago, which is good news. You can see in the graphic where we stack that versus other people in our, other folks in our population group, we're still behind, but statewide, we're hanging in there with what the statewide every county in North Carolina is looking like in the fund balance. On the page five, you've got your tax collection percentages how we stack up. We were at 95.34% last year. Our population group, we were a little tiny bit behind at 95.69% and statewide at 98%. And then I thought this graphic for expenditures on page six was interesting. 30% of our budget goes to human services. 27% goes to public safety. And then you have a hard part of other things with education at 7% and sanitation and whatnot, just to give you an idea of where the, where your tax dollar goes. Overall, as I said, we had a clean audit report. Everything was good. They wrote me up on one thing. We had too much bond on our register of deeds. We're not supposed to have 150,000. We had 100,000.
We can edit.
So by statute, we had to change that. It was interesting.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Could this possibly could be put on our website?
Yes, in fact, I've got that sent to Wayne Hyde. He was actually, he's posted in the report as well as this report to give the public an idea. That's just a nice report to show you in a nutshell what the county looks like.
Okay, I'm one who had to take the liberty to do this right now. But you know, come the time that you know that this present board, to your terms, over with, I've said this and I really want to really mean it, is that everybody is going to know where every penny is at before the sitting board exits. And then they can take it to McDonald's and Hardee's, wherever they want to go.
Exactly.
But they can take, take that report with them.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's really disheartening to know that you've been steward of the money and you've been steward of the decisions you make for the county, and then all of a sudden, they say, well, they went and hid some money, or they went and they hid that, or one thing or another. The issue of transparency is this, and that's all I want to say. And God willing, I'll live, and we have opportunity. You know, this kind of report is going to be very good. I appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, those are, those are really good just to give the taxpayers just a quick look without having to slot through hundred pages. And I do have the hundred-page audit report available in my office if you would like some light reading before you go to bed tonight. It's available. And it's available to the public as well. It's a public document, so anytime anyone wants to come by and look at it, we've got it and we can actually give you a copy of it or email it to you. Just wanted to give a report. Brad Cable and I met with the school officials Friday morning, had a very frequent conversation, made some real good, had a good dialogue back and forth about how to arrive at a budget preparation for the coming fiscal year. And what we decided, it's leading to both our boards, is that within the next couple of weeks, Lester Crane and I will be meeting and begin the process of dissecting the numbers. We're really working hard to come up with a formula, but in the meantime, we've got to come up with a budget. And so what we're going to plan to do is we're going to take his revenue streams and my revenue streams and then focus more on his revenue streams to figure out what pots of money are coming from the state and the federal government and what the needs are as far as our schoolchildren are concerned and how, you know, what role does the county play in filling, fulfilling those gaps. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to present to our particular boards sometime in early April, a presentation to show what we feel like, how the county can help fill those gaps for the school system. So we, like I said, we made some pretty good progress. I think as far as their capital outlet projects are going, a lot of these cities going very well. I think they're probably, they said for certain, be ready to move in hopefully by the end of the school year. And have got a lot of things on, on track to fulfill their obligations that, that they made in the hearings we had over the summer in finishing the 42 capital project initiatives this year. They did bring up one item which we'll be coming forward. This is just FYI. They are in the process of initiating an application to the state for ADM funds. And that is, that's the money that gets laid aside out of the corporate tax rate each year. And that does have a match which they will fulfill for $125,000 for surveillance equipment in the, in the schools. And what, where this came from is they had a meeting of a lot of the stakeholders in the community for school safety and school security. And the stakeholders all agree that it was very important that they put this in place as soon as possible. And of course, after Sandy Hook, that's all on our hearts and our minds that our children be safe and that there'll be mechanisms put in place. So they will probably sometime within the next few weeks bring a form for the board chair to sign off on and will request that the board, that the board commissioners sign off on that as quickly as possible. I told them I wish if I had children in school, that the schools would be on lockdown. We force said, and you know, to protect, but that I did want to make that. But I did feel like that we made quite a bit of progress in our meeting on Friday and getting some things put in place to begin our process for budget.
Now, did you say that there was, this would be the match?
The 125 would be the toe.
The toe?
Yeah. So the, the schools will match, 25% of that 125, the schools will be taken out of their capital outlet that they've got laid aside to put this in place. They looked at a couple of different options. One was for about $185,000, but they felt like the 125 would do everything they needed to do and be useful for the next 10 years. So, so just, that's just an FYI for the board. Okay. And I did give you a, just an article just to read. This is something that Angie Knight shared with me. We got to talking about the sequester and how it's going to impact all of our budgets if, if something doesn't happen. And she, she shared this with me. I'm just sharing it for you, just again, some light reading about how if, basically, not only will, will schools be impacted by the sequester, but there is a potential that it could be worse than, than what we even think it could be. Right now, they're looking at probably federal funding being cut at least five and a half percent. And of course, those programs are usually earmarked for exceptional children and reading programs and, you know, things like that. And so, you know, it's just something for us to be aware of, not only as our board is concerned, our office is concerned, but is just as citizens to be concerned with that. One last, one other item is just something, another FYI that's coming up. You're not expecting any action on it this evening, is the mapping printer in J.R. Rogers' office. It's got this one. It does all the flats. It's called a KIP. The lease on that is running out at the end of April. And so we've started some, I've just started some fact finding on that process. We have, apparently when that piece of equipment was leased five years ago or four and a half years ago, the lease was set up as a fair market value lease, which means if, at the end of the lease term, you can either turn it back in or you buy it out. And this is the type of machine that typically, now typically on copiers, you just, you do a fair market value lease because at the end of the lease term, they're wore out and you just turn it in, like we did to the copiers we put in the office. This particular machine, however, lives longer than the lease. It's, it's about a 10-year asset. And basically, I did a little research to buy that lease out at the end term, so the cost was $8,000. Market value on a new machine is $16,000. So we didn't come out the best on that deal from five years ago. There is an option that can be taken if the county so desires that you can do a trade-up to keep, which you get a new machine, do a dollar buyout on a machine like that, because once again, the machine's going to outlast the lease. And if you, if the board so chose, they could pay just about $2,000 to keep the old machine and it could be moved, like for instance, if, if the building inspector had use for it, you could move it to that department and have a new machine. Overall, though, looking at it, regardless of what option you guys go with, when we go, if we, if you, or you can just buy the old machine and keep it for another five years. That's another option. You have a little bit of a worry that, you know, parts get obsolete, you start having trouble with not having any problems with it. So you're, it's like a roll of the dice. But either way we go, I think if you guys decide to get a new KIP, I think we can save you money monthly. We come out better overall. So it's kind of a win-win either way we go. I don't know if, you know, I'm happy to get, I've got a kind of a preliminary quote from the company we purchased it from, just because we needed to find out what's the thing worth and, you know, how much are we talking to buy it out. I'm happy to try to get other quotes and bring those and then maybe at the next meeting, you guys can look at it. And, you know, we've got, we've got two more meetings before we really need to make a decision. But I just wanted to make you aware that that is out on the horizon, that we need to do something.
And you say that it saves the county money on the monthly? That's on a new machine?
On a new machine. We can, we can actually get a new machine plus keep the old one and still pay $50 less a month than we've been paying on the one.
Wow. Okay.
And it, you know, and I don't even know, I haven't even checked on the feasibility of whether the building inspection office can accommodate. I mean, it's big.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's just kind of, it's a, it's kind of a, to me, a win-win if you can get an $8,000 machine for $2,000. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is.
I thought you were going to say that.
Yeah.
Not exactly?
Yeah.
A new machine for $2,000?
Well, it's, it's a, we can, we can keep the old machine that's worth $8,000 but buy it for $2,000.
Okay.
Plus get a new machine.
At $50.
And pay $50 less on the lease per month and still have a brand-new machine with a dollar buyout at the end where we can own it at the end and then have maybe three to five years with a, with a machine just to use it.
What's the term of the lease?
It's 60 months.
It's back.
But they, you know, from what J.R. told me, we had a pretty good long conversation, he and then the person that worked these numbers up for me, they said, there's no reason in the world that these KIPs cannot work for 10 years. And he was really, he was not the same sales rep and he was pretty upset. He said, I can't believe they sent you guys up on a fair market value lease on something like this when there's no way you would really want to roll it at the end of five years. So just something to munch on and then I'll probably, you know, I don't know if you guys want me to work toward getting some other quotes as well or...
And this is with the same company, so, right, did you do it?
So whatever your pleasure is. Yeah. And I, if it's okay, I might go ahead and contact a couple of the other companies that I've worked with on his page just to see if they can even compare it, just to be fair.
That sounds good.
Okay. Then one more thing. We received an email from David Sawyer. He was our previous attorney, asking about, we, well, we came to him a check back in July 11th for prior services less, the services rendered in reference to the election board lawsuit. He has yet to cash that check, so technically that check is dead. He did, we did receive an email a couple of weeks ago that said he's writing in reference to the NPA invoices. He wanted to know where we were at with it. And he did say that we can contact and work for a state board program and fee resolution in the event that the county would like to make use of the program. Basically, out of the billings that we received in 11, the county would go $8,725 directly referenced to the election board lawsuit. And I did not know if the board would want me to contact the state board to do a fee resolution or what we need to do there.
What I want to know is how much do we owe the county?
What I, what I want to know is the county not responsible, is that KIP going to get? get, they were going to, we have to wipe into that.
We had invoices totaling thirty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We paid him a check of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars, leaving eighty-seven hundred and twenty-five dollars unpaid. And I wrote him a letter, basically stating what the board's position was, that, that the board did not approve payment for any of the billings related to the election board lawsuit, referenced the fact that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners had paid the fees in reference to their part, and that I was directed to reduce the billings by name of...
Okay, I've got to ask a question about the NCACC part, because as far as I understood, all they presented was an amicus brief. Is that right?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
That's correct.
There was no monetary contribution to that at all?
No, no, there was no monetary contribution. The lay was presented with two, was that they were going to help pay the attorney's fees, and, and so, and I was involved in the outside at that point too. And so I kept asking, what amount are they going to pay? Well, it was up to ten thousand dollars, but that was going to be towards the amicus brief, because they don't ever pay, it turns out, they don't pay attorney's fees for a level award, that they blank out, of course. And so, but the county presented that that was a reason to pursue it was because the, they, they were going to help pay their attorney's. And since, I, I, I don't know, the insurance, did the county insurance pay on there? They couldn't because it was, you know, far off.
The law.
Yeah. There was also the matters of billings previous to, that occurred, previous to the June thirtieth, ten-year end, that we never received until way up in, after the audit was...
Year or so.
Yeah, after the audit was completed, and those were not paid as well. I don't know if he's asking for those as well, he's just very vague.
There was some legality in that.
Yeah. And what we had done was I had written a letter dated February fourth of ten requesting those billings, and he acknowledged that he received that letter.
He received it, didn't he?
That he received that letter. He actually signed off on my letter stating he received my letter.
Didn't we set right here, Mike, a, 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 and requested that he send us a complete bill of what the county owed you?
More than once.
More than once.
Yeah, that's just for record.
And he drug around and drug his feet, drug his feet, finally he come dragging in your bill and he paid for it.
Well, my, my, my response to this would be, we need to beg things taken care of. You know, you mentioned that there's vague, things we can't go paying tax dollars or something that's vague. If he can give us the clarity and justification for it, and I, and I stand, you know, the, the issue, because I remember, you know, the NCACC, you know, and I played with Sharon Scudder, it was, had been an attorney for them, and I understood that the amicus brief was presented, you know, for him, and, and, you know, as we're paying out dollars to attorneys for support, I, I never have seen that before the NCACC in, in my experience with it, so. So my, my recommendation, and I don't know if it would require an action or not, is that we need to really have a direct, I guess, to you, that you need to clarify it with him. And he has to, somewhere in the, itemize it and present his side of it, because I don't want to go jumping into arbitration with the, the power association over it. If we owe the money, we pay it. But, you know, Fisher and Holby obviously said, you know, please let the check, like Susan, that's not our, not our, unless he wasn't cashing it because he wasn't satisfied with the payment.
No, it would be the reason. Yeah. It was in full, that's what he's considering with it.
Yeah, so that's another consideration in that.
And that's a legal thing, I think.
Yeah, so, and I'm not an attorney, but we have an attorney, and perhaps we can have a brief discussion at some point in time, you know, about it. And we just have, and open anyway, so. If that'd be the pleasure of the board for a directive, then that's what we'll do, is get clarity from him on, on building. Because, you know, it's true, we get asked again and again and again, and I've got to ask this, and I don't want to drag this out anymore than we need to, is, is that we had a, a situation where it crossed over fiscal year?
That was the second, yeah.
That was the problem.
Because the audit had been closed.
Yes.
Yeah, and there was no provision made in the subsequent budget, because we kept asking him for those billings. He kept saying he was going to get them to us. And so the audit was closed and there's no, you know, I can't, I can't pre-audit something from a previous year legally, so, yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense for us?
Just a directive for the...
Yeah, so that's what we'll, we'll need, is to do that and not, you know, drag our...
I'll write him a letter and just ask him to clarify what invoices that he feels are not paid in full.
Right.
And, and out of my statement.
I think that him, that would be fair. All right. Any other questions or comments for Becky, the board?
Just one more note, I know I've run on a whole long time. We're about halfway down our fixed asset inventory. So we've done the fiscal inventory, now I'm just going to pound it into the computer and create barcodes, I went almost.
Great, great, it's been a long time, you know. All right, that's really good. All right, if we can, Ms. Clerk, can we go ahead and act on these action items from the pledge of the finance report? At this time, I have asked a motion to entertain the approval of payment, not that one, that was tabled for now, but on the pledge amendment number sixteen is presented for the overreach on payment from the USFAR server on timber receipts. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion about the pledge amendment number sixteen? Not all present, but other than, all opposed, last sign, motion carries. All right, that hands all the business for the finances. This time, it's Andy Cable, a letter of support for parking right away on Highway twenty-eight, Highway one forty-three intersection.
Okay, and Andy didn't come, I had actually called Chairman Edwards. They want to do a park-to-ride with the state, state V O T. They're at the intersection of twenty-eight and one forty-three. What that does, the state will foot gravel, put paving down, and it will be for park-to-ride, a ride-to-park, and where it will, you know, to fine riders. And it will just be known throughout the state, it'll go on the North Carolina D M B site as a place that you can park and, you know, cargo with other people.
Cargo.
And, and one of the things too is that if y'all go back and look in the recreation plan, park-to-recreation plan, it's in the back. There's a back of that, and I have, I think all of us have gone through the Johnson Gap up there, and seen a lot of those parked there, and there were those, and I've been there for a good while. But the thing is, is, you know, that would be a, a great asset for the county, I believe, and I'm glad it's part of it. So just, you need some vote on this, but just FYI.
Just FYI, it was a merit of...
I think it will be, and they're going to be responsible for the right-of-way, right-of-way questions and everything else. There's a big stack of law up here right here.
Yeah.
And I don't know who they want to, but I, you know, I don't know, I don't know who the property owners are, I don't know anything about it, but I would, I would support that as part of the...
The law brought me on, take that.
Well, that's not my idea. You know, it just... All right, any other comments on this, the board? All right, if not, we have public comment, please? Our county manager isn't here tonight, of course, he's away, Chapel Hill for training. Been going for a good while now. Ms. Clerk is doing everything, so appreciate her.
We do have to...
At this time, would you like to recognize Glenn Wheelhouse in place?
Welcome back. Thank you for your time. I'm here not to represent the chamber at this time, I'm here as a citizen. And I just wanted to kind of voice my concerns about something that we've talked about in the community, and I guess it's coming up, is a Ronnie Millsap concert, which is scheduled to come. First off, I'm very kind, things like this, and you've seen that in what I do around here, and what I, how compassionate I am, so I'm behind things like this. But I think in this instance, I just want to make sure that, that I guess there's some clarity, there's a lot of ifs and maybes with this, and it was presented to, to me and to our membership, that when I was at the chamber meeting, as a refund for contribution. And there's a lot of stipulation whether that is going to be the case. So I just want to make sure that, that we all are really knowing that we're going to put this money at risk, if it's not a, a given, that we're getting this money back, if we haven't, as far as I know. Now, I know this later on, we're in chambers, so I may learn some things tonight, I don't know. My last understanding, we still have questions about how all the other expenses on top of the cost of getting here are going to be covered. We also have issue about where I and you will be. And then too, if, you know, there's the questions of, we've got a heritage festival, we've got it, we end up putting it over on one side of county, and heritage festival on this side, we're almost repeating with each other. I just think it really needs some more, I think we need to really kind of dot our i's. And there, again, I, I, I hope you contribute to anything like that, but I just want to make sure that it's not under kind of a false understanding. There's, there's a lot left to be out there, and it's a lot of money. And, and we have venue size issues and things like that, but still haven't patted out. And, and so I just don't want anybody going, oh, if it doesn't, doesn't fly, you know, or it's a, it's a no-brainer, we're, we're going to make them in. And I don't think it's quite like that, I think it's a little tougher, I think it really needs some really good looking at, and, and some, some logistics figured out before we really start throwing a lot of taxpayer money at it, is kind of my, my stand on it.
Okay, I, I, excuse me, I just like to jump down, is because the first, the first, I heard about any of this, it's on the...
Okay, and that's, and, and that's kind of the way this thing has been flying. And I have, I'll, what is it? And I was a little surprised to hear my public comment before we got to that agenda item, because I was anxious to hear what was said about it.
Well, no, you're not going to hear it from me.
I, I've heard a lot.
And then coming and asking for taxpayer money for Ronnie Millsaps, and, and I don't even know the price, I don't know the plan, I don't know...
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
But, you know, but then, then we'll have to see about the issue of, well, you know, it's going to be a great revenue creating thing, and I'm saying, well, got people paying five dollars a month for their taxes and...
The knowledge I had of it, which is not by any means a gospel knowledge here, the knowledge I had of it is twenty-five thousand dollars is a fee that goes directly to Ronnie's Millsaps organization. They're planning on being able to recoup that in ticket sales. So that's at twenty-five dollars a ticket, that's a thousand people. We only have pretty much one venue in this county that will fit twenty-five, that a thousand people, and that's a store about as high. So, so that would kind of limit us, so that's where it would be. The other thing is when questions were asked, like, well, who's going to pay for tennis if we need them, who's going to, who's going to man parking, who's, where's all these, there's a lot of expenses, as I learned with the Winter Fest, and I've gotten no feedback as to how that will all work. The Fontanillo, which is the venue that would be large. So there's just all these questions, and when they started to be asked, it was, we'll figure that out later, right now. The Heritage Festival is fifth and sixth. And when these questions were asked, there was no solid answers. And then the question was raised, well, if you get the twenty-five thousand, and we have investors and people that put this money in expecting to get compensation back out of ticket sales, or where are you going to get the money to pay for everything else?
Well, they said you could figure out the tax write-off, I believe, if you need your money back.
We were told that too, as a chamber, and we're a nonprofit.
I've seen that since the little plan.
Right, we're a nonprofit, and, you know, there's, we were told, oh, it's a tax write-off, no, we're a nonprofit, we can't write off the contribution. You know, so there's just really a lot of jumping, it's putting the carriage before the horse, I guess, kind of, and that is an urgency, we got to have it by, by, you know, we, we got to have this money now.
I'm just, I'm just seeing this. Yeah, it's like this. Really, and, and I appreciate you bringing up these points, because if you had to call somebody right now, I guess you'd call Judy?
I think it's the Gray team you called.
The Gray team's involved, it's obviously the political one.
Excuse me?
I don't think it is Gray, we discussed this at our meeting on Monday, and it was brought us kind of the same way it was with...
Well, travel tourism.
Okay, that is the first time I've seen it, and travel tourism is listed at the bottom of the election.
You're listed as sponsor, Gray's listed as sponsor, Gray chose not to sponsor financially. Now, Gray has agreed to be the fiscal agent, which has the value to it, so they, they are technically at that point a sponsor. But that's the duration of it. They chose not to give any money to it. And their reasoning was because, hey, we've got the cart before the horse here. We, we don't have the details we need, we don't have the facts we need.
I was actually calling this up in here, but I said, I didn't know anything about it until after lunch today.
And that's, that's the way this has been going, and that's what made me say, wait a minute, somebody needs to slow down, and, and this is a lot of money. And you can send a promoter twenty-five thousand dollars and never see your dime back or Ronnie Millsap concert, and that, I'm going, somebody needs, there's a lot of questions, it's going to be researched, needs to be done. And when somebody comes to me and says, I need money and I need it like in twenty-four hours, red flags go up from this man. I just wanted to make sure that nobody was kind of going down a rosy path here without making sure that we knew where we were going.
All right, Glenn. All right, I do appreciate it. Any comments, or anything, Glenn?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will specify that this is listed on the, on the session items and the possibility for actions, possible, possible contribution. And I thank you back there, thank you, and thank you, appreciate that. All right, so at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jake Gelli. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Before Christmas, one of the meetings, it was mentioned that y'all were going to work on the budget, and then Ms. Garland said, Dave, working on the budget. So I'm here to speak for the county employees. I don't have a dog in this fight, other than common decency. The, the employees of this county have been, been good pay raises. I'm not talking about one percent. Food has gone up over twenty percent in the last year. You know what the gas is like today. They cannot continue where they are with the salaries you're getting. Now, I hear some people, I think quite uninformed, say, well, we need to be glad they've got a job here in this economy. Well, I would ask those people, would you do that job for what they're getting paid? Oh, no, I'm not interested in working, you know, I, I would not do it. Well, then who's going to do it? It's common knowledge that Graham County is a training grounds for EMS people and for sheriff's deputies for other counties. And something's got to be done. They went for four years and didn't get a raise, and they got a one percent last year. That doesn't cut it. They're way, way behind. Now, y'all did great things several years ago when you cut the number of people who were employed by the county, because I think there was some fluff there, and it didn't, you did too, because you cut some. Well, that doesn't mean that we can starve out the ones that are left. They need a good raise. And I would like you to sit down and come out with a four- or five-year plan, I mean, you can't give them a ten or twelve percent raise this year, I understand that. But instead of going year to year, get some kind of a plan where they can do a budget from one year to the next. Instead of going four or five years out, they can plan, do I really want to stay here or not? Because I've got no future. Graham County's got some very well-educated in how they experience employees, I think do a darn good job. A lot of them have taken advantage of Tri-County, they've bettered their education, and I think they're pretty darn competent, and I think they're underpaid, and I think they're privileged to have a lot of them. But they can't continue to work for wages where they can't feed their children, pay their taxes, and do the other things, have a good quality of life, and that's what I And that's what I'm, if I can say that I don't have a dog in this fight. But I hear people say, well, there'd have to be a mill increase. I don't care. I'm happy to pay one more mill on my property tax if it will give them a good raise. But I would hope that if you're going to raise the mill rate to give them that raise, that every bit of that raise must goes to them. And money doesn't come in and then it starts getting chopped out by all the people coming in wanting money. If it's for the employees, it goes to the employees. And it's not to be picked apart by everyone who wants a little bite of the pie there. And that's really all I've got to say about it. But please, think about them. And we'll give you something here, talking about people knowing about visibility, being able to see what's going on in the county. How about considering placing that in your report?
Would you like to present this, please?
You going to tell you what it is?
No, I just want you to put it in the record.
Oh, sure. Okay, for the record, in the pie chart handout that was available, I believe it's page five, it shows uncollected balance of at-bore property taxes receivable for the county. Well, it goes back to two thousand seven to two thousand eight and it goes anywhere from five hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to six, up to seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for this period of time, about five years. So my question is this, what percentage of this tax money that was owed for these years has been collected? Not just the percentage, but how much money? If it's not been collected, why has it not been collected? How much is delinquent and how much is owed to Graham County? And what's been done to collect it? Outstanding to Graham County? And we can do a lot with that money. I talked about giving pay increases. Well, there's some money right there that can be pulled in maybe into the new kitty to be divvied out. But just saying that two thousand seven, there's a half a million dollars, two thousand eight, there's a half a million dollars, two thousand nine, there's three quarters of a million dollars. That doesn't tell me anything. I want to know, yes, there was that much owed then, how much did you get of that money? So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
I wish I had the knowledge to answer that, or any comments, but I don't. But the point is, you know, is that the delinquent taxes are always delinquent. There's not a lot of, am I right?
We hold them on the books for ten years.
Wow.
Well, let me rephrase that. We hold them forever. We can enforce collection for ten years. After that, statute, we cannot enforce. However, if someone voluntarily pays, we can collect it. That's why we hold them on the books forever. As of January thirty-first, this includes DMV, so excuse me. As of January thirty-first, the seven hundred that was still uncollected last year, we have collected about a hundred and eighty-five thousand of that.
What?
Because apparently garnishments aren't doing it, holding people's, you know, putting holes on their paychecks.
Paycheck.
See, this board did it.
And we're garnishing, we're doing this.
We, you see, this board's doing that. And you know, we're being held for that and we're the seat, we're the board's presently seated. And if I have to answer back to all of that, I'm telling you that you want to go and do that. You have restrictions and limitations of ten years. You know, you don't write them off. They're still there. And yeah, I mean, outside of going and selling everything they've got on the courthouse steps, is that what, you know, is that their solution? Is that the law?
Can you attach that one? Yeah, if they automatically have a lien on them when they become delinquent under the statute. So, that being said, let's say you have a bill that you do debt set off, you do garnishment and get nothing. The lien is still there, so if that person or their heirs ever sells that property, it has to be, gets collected at that point.
Taxes or liens have got to be renewed or they run out.
No, to give clear title on this property, now if somebody buys and they don't care if they're clear title, then it won't matter. But the taxes are there, you don't have to do any kind of renewal, they're there for ten years back all the time regardless of, you know, and so the title's not clear unless the taxes are paid.
So if there's money on the property, they have to be paid. I know the bank requires that.
If it's a bank loan, if it's any kind of transaction where somebody gets a title sort of done, then your title to property, that's what you pay.
Does that not provide that thing of the amendment?
And one thing you will see, Mr. Kelly, or is likely to see, if the General Assembly doesn't overturn House Bill seventeen seventy-nine, which it's on the floor right now, is that part of that seven hundred is the DMV. So those DMV, we'll be collecting our DMV taxes ahead, okay, when we pay our tax. And so you'll see that, it's hopeful that you will see when we finish the audit up for June thirtieth of fourteen, that that will have dropped somewhat because that's not just real property, that's DMV taxes that are sitting there. Of course, you eventually get your DMV right now if you want to get your tag, but we'll be collecting that. So those receivables will go away gradually and you'll always have those old ones sitting there, but you won't see seven hundred thousand sitting in receivables because about, about a hundred and fifty of that was DMV taxes. But you will see that shrink somewhat. But you know, I know the tax office is quite diligent, but we had some phone calls today where people's taxes had been, their tax rate fund had been withheld, which should be. I agree with it one hundred percent. I pay my property taxes, I think everybody else should. So I have very little mercy with people calling me about that. But you know, I can assure the taxpayers that the tax office is always constantly working on those attachments and garnishments. And they're very unpopular when it comes to attachment season where we actually go in and say, here's your bank account, guess what? Anything that goes into it is ours. And of course, they get a, they get a notice, but not, you know, by statute, we can give them a notice the same day we attach the bank account, just so that there's no games played there. So you know, I'm hopeful that we will see that number shrink. If HB doesn't get, HB seventeen seventy-nine, that's something that I meant to mention in my comments. As citizens, twenty million dollars could stand to be wasted by our General Assembly if they overturn House Bill fifteen, seventeen seventy-nine. There's been twenty million dollars of taxpayers' money that has been invested in the system that will allow for the consolidation of the taxes and the taxes to be paid at one time, which highly increases efficiency for the taxpayer. And there's a bill on the floor of the House right now that's in committee to repeal that. And that would mean that the twenty million dollars that each camp, all the counties, a hundred counties collected interest, sent it to the state to pay for this, that will be gone if that, if that bill passes. And I don't typically get on my soapbox about political issues, but this is a one hundred percent purely political move by the General Assembly.
Please understand.
By a member of the General.
Because one business owner doesn't like the fact that his business may be adversely impacted, so the rest of the citizens of North Carolina can just forget enough that twenty million dollars.
One good, one good news, I actually have had contact from a local attorney and there is a piece of property that that taxes were owed on it and there are no heirs left anywhere. And so somebody keeps the property and so he's going to be getting in touch to see if we can actually do a foreclosure and go ahead so that we can, so somebody can actually buy the property. So that's a good thing because this is one where there's not even heirs left in the county or there's nobody left to pay the taxes. Or you know, so it's one of those situations where you're not moving up one of your taxpayers when you're big to live with because you know, they can't pay your taxes and they're trying. So that's, that's good news. Of course, the bad news is on courthouse steps, it may not bring, bring this money.
Get back to collecting taxes, Jay. A lot of these numbers, when you combine so many numbers, they add up big. It adds up big time. But if you'll go back and check these little tax bills, I was standing up for the other day, the boy walked out and showed me a tax bill, a dollar and forty-three cents for something that just go. Okay, the boy owed a dollar and forty-three cents. Which would it be cheaper? I don't know what the boy paid or do you know what he did? But would it be cheaper to not collect that dollar and forty-three cents and spend seventy-five dollars to court cash your clients' table? Which would be the cheapest?
I agree with you, but when you're talking about three quarters of a million dollars and a hundred and fifty thousand is in the DMV, that's going to come off. And then let's say there's another hundred thousand in these little nitty dollar, two dollar. We still got a half a million bucks out there.
How much is going to cost the county to collect that half a million dollars and then twenty-five, thirty-five, forty dollars in tax credit?
Do you have some ideas?
You got any idea?
Well, the attorney has the ideas. I mean, there's legal ways to do this.
We're doing everything we can really. I mean, if there's something that we're missing, and what I'm hearing you saying is that we're not doing what we.
No, I never made that comment.
Okay, that's how I feel.
Well, that is a defensive move on your part. I was not offensive at all in blaming you. I'm just saying, there's too many unpaid taxes and it never gets better.
My question again is what do you recommend, sir?
That's what the attorney's for. Take the law. Whatever the law says, enforce it.
Actually, the most efficient way to do that is for the tax office itself to do it so that you don't have attorneys facing you. And it's being real, being real for closures. I checked on it when I first started and that is the most efficient way. That's the only way that your county does it. When Scott Lees, his attorney, has it for you? And it's, it's just, it's just pure paperwork. It's just forms that have to go out. And that way, there's no attorneys that get paid out, so.
I know that we stepped out.
It gets me, but you know.
We stepped out with more, more measures than previous boards have.
You certainly have. I feel you.
And what we, what we want to do is, is like, it's not all going to happen overnight, you know that. I mean, you're a reasonable man and I, and so, you know, we're going to do what we can. We've even gone to the point that extending to people, you know, if you haven't got it, you know, these are times that are really tough, you know, as well as I did. And we have people that come in once a month, five dollars a month. And then they're having to get a ride to get down and pay it. I mean, it's not that you're cold-hearted in the matter, but you've got people who are doing everything they can. That's the one I think about. I think about that woman. I think about her knowing that she's meeting her obligation. And we have a finance report here and it's read and we hear about those terrific numbers and the obligations the county has financially. It's the taxpayers. It's not, it's not by prowess on our part or whatever. It's, it's like you're saying, everybody needs to carry their, carry their load. And I think we have done everything we can to say to somebody, if you can't do this, you know, financially, then come in, let's make an arrangement.
Which like Banky says, we don't, Hill Cross is held party, but we are going to the extent that the law allows on garnishments to paychecks, to bank accounts, to savings accounts, everything that we can do right now.
I think everybody ought to have a second chance. And this little old lady is paying her five dollars, she's doing all she can do. She's trying. But people that haven't paid their taxes in ten years and they won't pay it because it's going to drop off, one year's going to drop off, what is the incentive to pay your taxes? If every ten years, it just keeps dropping off? I mean, they're getting over. But, and I'm not saying to be cruel to anybody, but the law should be fairly enforced against me, you, everybody. But people that need a chance, sure, I'm forgiving them a chance. If they want to make their payments, that's great. That money goes away at the end of the year as being delinquent because they've paid it off. But our amounts are not dropping by any great percentage. Couple of years, they were pretty good. Other years, they're up there. But there's always above a half a million dollars that's out there that y'all could be using for the county.
Absolutely. And don't think for a minute that I wouldn't like to have that or anybody on this board for the county.
If we need it. It's not that we would like it and it would be fun to have it. The county needs the money.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Gelli. Appreciate the conversation. All right, at this time, any other questions, comments for Mr. Gelli? All right, at this time, we'll go into the discussion items and Ms. Clerk, I'll leave this to you. A lot of these are FYI, there are some issues here with some property opportunities that will be spoken up and some updates and such. So the board be reminded that we do have the action items down here at the bottom. An addition of two of those are the two priorities for the Health Department for this next year of their survey, then also the public records. And that is going to be a lot of ordinance, it's going to be a resolution, the policy amendment for that. So Ms. Clerk, I'll leave you to go ahead through this.
Jane, the first thing was, Mr. Carringer with the school had come in and we never did make a decision on those four point eight eight acres that is over in Sticoa. And we did have discussion on it, but we have to refuse the purchase of it in order for them to put it up for sale. So that's what that was about. And that would be committed in an action. The second one is plenty of the office buildings, you know, we're getting some new buildings, but I need to table this for some personnel enclosed if that's pleasing with the board.
Can it be personnel?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The next item is the update on the floodplain ordinance. I received an email on Friday afternoon that, and it reads, "Good afternoon, I have reviewed the ordinance since February the eighth and we find that there are still a couple of minor edits that we would request Graham County to make to flood ordinance. We are sending the ordinance in track change format." Because I have done this six times. At this time, they took it in the track change on their end. It did not change anything in the ordinance. Example, in one of the definitions, they wanted the word "and" non-encroachment put in and the hydraulic study, which was already in there in the first line anyway. Another change was the word "that" at the end of a sentence. So there was no changes that would reflect you having to do another motion on. I did prepare copies for you to sign. They want to sign copy, I need to sign copy and one signed copy goes to the clerk of court because it will be the final ordinance. We did have the ordinance, we did an amendment to the ordinance, but what we were doing was getting approval from Ms. Wilson. She took the changes and is going to schedule the site visit with us. So we have been accepted as far as the floodplain ordinance goes.
I'd like to comment to this. The clerk, Kim, came through the office to check my mail one day and one of the things that they were asking her to, and those here for me were PDF, going to work, it didn't form in. Whose problem was it? It was ours, not theirs. I think I ran it off the machine and wrote it down.
Well, they asked for word the first time, I sent it in word. The second time they asked for PDF, I changed it off and sent it in PDF. The third time they ask it for me in Word. So the third time I had to re-change it once again. And then I changed it three more times in between, which my formal copy did not have the non-edits on their copy. My copy was correct and David can witness that. I had him come in on Friday afternoon and my copy was correct and once, you know, a little misspelled word in manufactured homes, that was kind of the examples. But I, we finished it, it's through and like I said, there was no changes to anything in the ordinance that you adopted.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, so we're at the stage now just to have the site visit?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
When they bid, y'all wanna be-
I think we were all due, we went in.
Yeah.
I was.
I think it's supposed to be a Mr. McClure.
Yes, and Ms. Wilson, I think will come to-
Yes, she loves him like me.
Exactly. From Atlanta. Um, DSS site won't repair. We, we have proposals that were given. We had a complaint about our handicap parking curb out here. Um, we tried to enlist all the contractors that we can that deal in the, uh, repair work at that time. The estimates that came in, um, were from Vanville General Contracting for six thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents, from Robbinsville Custom Molding for five thousand eight hundred seven dollars, and from Tim Creaksman Quality Masonary for four thousand nine hundred six dollars. The, um, David Hightower worked real hard on getting these proposals and he did contact other contractors and these are the only three that have reached back to him. So the lowest bid would be, uh, Quality Masonary for forty-nine oh six.
Have any more of an action to add?
Yes, that'll be action on it.
Okay.
Uh, the county boards, we've had three, uh, board requi-, actually four, five, sorry. Uh, the EDC board, we're going to field Commissioner Smith's remaining term. Commissioner Orr has volunteered for that board. She has attended those meetings faithfully, even though she was not a member, but she has been heavily involved with the EDC as well as the travel and tourism. Um, appointment to the DSS board to field Commissioner Smith's remaining term. Commissioner Eller has graciously volunteered for consideration of that board. Appointment to the RDA board, I was, uh, told on Thursday or Friday night that we needed one more member.
The board, the RDA board didn't want to recommend that Andy came on to see it.
Yes. And Andy, I did speak with Andy and he said he would graciously serve. That was fine. Uh, we have a request for an appointment to the recycling board, which will be Ms. Lisa Russo. And she has been heavily involved in our recycling program, which I'll, I'll discuss a little bit on down the line, too. And then the last one is the appointment to the Nursing and Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. This is Southwest Commission, um, and Jean Perkins sits on that. I think that's the nursing home visitors and all that. These need to be action items on date. Okay, update to the sanitation transfer station. Mr. McGill's, or McGill and Associates coming in with two estimates.
Be careful about giving us figures right now.
Okay. And we just need to decide if option one or an option two, um, is the, is the estimates to be given. Um, everything's coming along, the permit fee has been approved. I had to do a sanitation operations plan, which I'll touch on down here, too. But everything was a go there. So we're, we're moving right along on that. Any questions? I'm sorry, I think I jumped ahead and not asking for questions.
All right, there's, there's one comment about the transfer station that we need to be aware of. Um, and the reason I said about this right here, the estimate that was given on McGill, uh, the reason that I wanna caution and send that is the fact is that, uh, I believe that we need to reach out farther.
Yeah.
Um, I've had conversations with Billy after we had our, uh, meeting for recycling the other day. I took a few minutes to have a discussion about that. Uh, we're gonna have to have further discussion about this, um, and come to some determination about this. Initially, and this is not, this is just me, I think it needs to go out for RFP. In other words, we're not asking people to come and make a bid. Gotta be careful on bids. Uh, but we are gonna be asking folks to give us another look about what might be proposed in getting that site repaired. Um, I'll say no more about that, other than I strongly recommend, you know, as a member of this board, we'll have further discussion if you like, um, that we do go and start seeking out, uh, RFP. Our county manager, uh, will be very interested. Glad you're, you're covered up. And, and he's out, and he's doing the training, and he's not with us. But we need to have that conversation soon. And, uh, it may be, uh, we're gonna be scheduling another meeting for the, uh, for, uh, pay plan. So we're gonna have that conversation again. So I want to urge all the board to get all the information that you can, individual members, you get to get collectively, and take another look at what's been presented and, and reach out to other folks to get their ideas on that particular site. Any other comment on the updated sanitation transfer station?
The library contract. We have received a contract with Manahale Library back, um, some way ago. But anyway, Mr. Presley, with the library brought back, uh, another paper, and he said that we had signed the wrong paperwork and asked that we, um, resign. When we looked at the contract, there were several changes from the original, um, agreement. And I have called Miss Daphne Childress and asked her for an explanation to the changes. I do have those in your packets. I think you need to table this to read those and review those just a little bit.
May I make comment? I'd like to jump in there. Uh, what it was is that it was read and it was in July, I'm not bad enough to state it, during the fiscal year, uh, with regard to contract with the, uh, Manahale Regional Library. And, uh, they came through saying something to the effect that we had signed the wrong signature sheet. And it ended up being that actually the wording of the contract had been changed.
Did they give an explanation on the general officer? Is that, is that included in your-
That is included in the packet, yeah.
But I, I, I'm really glad everybody read that and considered because coming through and asking us to sign the document that we've already signed and approved, and then to have the terms at that time kind of changed without any comment, um, is not good.
Which I did tell her that made the first contract null and void because there was changes to this new one that was presented. So, and that's why I called to ask her for the explanations.
Okay. And we will deal with that. Thank you.
Just to FYI, we've got a surgery scheduled for our drug dog called Beck. I think there was an injury to the Navy or, um, do we have an estimate?
Just for what I've not received.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what this dog has done for you. We need to find out. And then find out how much time it's got left on your limitations to handle. Please don't be a turd. It's true.
How much time to find out what it's done for us and-
I think it has been- Okay, I think it has been by a drug dog and a pro dog. Um, the officer did tell me that after the surgery, he would only be able to do one or the other, and I honestly can't remember which one, was probably the less taxing physically. Um, and he will require quite a bit of physical therapy to get him back to the less taxing.
And refresh my memory here, did we not purchase a new dog?
They came and requested to purchase one back in the fall, but they never did per-, make that purchase because they couldn't get a handler. We did have two, we had Beck and Risa. Okay, and the drug money? The drug money was gonna be used to purchase that third one. Okay. Um, but they could not get a handler, so, and one of the deputies to, to be willing to handle the dog, uh, or able to handle the dog or whatever. So they held off on that. So that will leave us, if Beck has to be retired, that will leave us with one dog. Okay, does the money that we've been purchasing, the third dog, can that money be used for this surgery and rehab? If, if there, if he has a lot of time left, like he was asking, and I don't know that either.
That's a good point. Or retire, or retire this dog and purchase the other.
Yeah.
And go to get a, like, a handler then. That's true. It's a good point.
So we just need some more information on that. Don't we need to table that?
Yeah, it says it's FYI, so.
I could have Detective Cox, Matthew Cox, he is the one that has been real informed in front of us. He's one of the handlers. Come in and explain a little bit more to us, to him, and, and especially with the two questions from Commissioner Eller. Okay, um, a possible resolution on the Public Records Act. What is happening, I think, um, throughout the state due to some strict gun law changes, proposed changes, rumors, whatever, some of the counties are, um, drawing up resolutions to require that handgun purchase permits issued by the sheriff's office, um, not be made public record. And so we've had some counties already act on it as far as making it. It's a legislative request-
Right.
-to our legislature not to release that information because that information contains birth dates, social security numbers, homes, physical addresses. Um, it has a lot of personal information that's on it. So we were asked if we, if this board would consider adopting a resolution, which I have read in one, just in case.
Is there, is there in fact, uh, legislation pending on this on the board?
There must be. I have not seen it come across my desk at this time. Like I say, it's being proposed and, and, uh, right now, it's just a hot topic. Uh, I'm concerned about those public record requests going, you know, coming into our offices.
It's stemming from whatever that federal document, yeah, or?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, I have a question with this. Yeah. Uh, if there's a public records request and it can be what we're back in, is that the process of going through and marking out that pertinent information? And then if we have resolution, we have to have a resolution to some particular action. So is this resolution then something that we're doing independently of the county? Or is this a resolution in support of pending legislation?
In support of being in the legislation.
Then what's the legislation number? I mean, I have to understand this because-
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute fourteen forty-five and fourteen forty-seven.
That's all I need to know. Thank you. She has that on there, it's right in the resolution because... I'll tell you, I'm getting older. Yes, fourteen. Yeah, you did, you got fourteen. Okay, thank you.
The second possible resolution to consider is the legislative goal for the 2013 NCACC that was adopted. We went along with them from day one, and this is just a resolution, uh, combining all hundred counties saying that they are for the goals that were submitted.
I'd ask Commissioner Orr to just speak a minute about that because she was there in that process in the subcommittee and also at the legislative conference.
Right, and, uh, I was just reviewing the top five goals that we agreed on. Oppose the shift of state transportation responsibilities to the counties. Number two, reinstate ADM and lottery funds for school construction. Number three, oppose unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to counties. Number four, ensure adequate mental health funding. And number five, preserve the existing local revenue base. Those are the, the top five that we agreed on. If the others of those did any here, if anybody would want to take a look at.
And, uh, also those are available online. They finally put this up there. Probably have had a chance to look at those. There's more than just those, but those are the priorities that they've established. So, that's good. All right, thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Okay, and the possible contribution from Ronnie Millsout. Um, I had just received this on Thursday afternoon, so I myself am, am just in the fog as much as anyone else. Um, I would suggest that you table this until we can get more information. I don't wanna waste your time going over something that we don't really have facts on, so. Does that please anyone?
Yeah, that's fine, you table. Uh, I, I made it, okay, for a pen.
Okay, possible special workshop session for the 2013 pay plan. We need, we need to make maybe the first week in March, excluding that Wednesday. Manager Kayla's not gonna be here on that Wednesday. If you have anything the first week in March, uh, he's going to present the pay plan, uh, that will be in place for the county employees to begin their performance evaluations based on, in, in raising in their pay levels. And I think that he can, uh, address this a little bit more than I can.
Well, um, we had a conversation, Greg and I've been talking back and forth about the process of the budget and, and, um, Mr. Edwards came by the other day and we had a, a, a pretty, uh, involved conversation about how our budget is basically, one-third of our budget is salary and compensation and benefits. And in order to have a budget that makes sense on several levels, I think it's really important that we go ahead and get really serious about implementing a pay plan. Greg has worked quite extensively on how to, to, uh, construct a draft of it and it's like I mentioned to, uh, Mr. Edwards and Greg, but we have no illusion that we can bite it all off at once. Um, but it's something that we, we need to strike a point and go forward so that we can make sure that if there's any inequities in the pay plan, if that's addressed. And also to make it easier on the board throughout the budget year. If we get a pay plan in place, it provides the department managers a basis to go from and, and, um, formulating their budget, first of all, and, and also managing their departments as far as the personnel is concerned. It gives some rationale. Is that shown on? Not on that, that's just basically just different departments. Okay. Um, but, um, it, the other side of it is, if, if, if we have this plan in place, then when we construct the budget, um, it would be up to the department managers to think forward into the next budget year as far as do we have people who are getting certified and, you know, they're working on their education and they're getting certified or maybe like in the case with, with DSS, those are our office, state personnel, health department, who may be stepping up a pay grade because of longevity or what have you. Um, it gives them a, a framework to go ahead and think forward. Um, and determine who are those people who, if they get certified, I need to go ahead and make that allocation in the budget so that, once the budget is set for the, the, uh, employees and their pay rates, it's set. Uh, with, with the, the knowledge that if someone does get the LET certified or gets some additional education that's already been planned for, those step up in pay rates can occur, uh, without the board commissioners having to hammer out each and every case through the queue.
It has to be time and performance.
And, and I suppose-
And about what the certification is.
Yes.
Can we see a graph? Did I have that? That one-third of what, one-third of what we spent now goes for salaries, benefits? I mean, okay.
Yeah. And, and, you know, as I was relating, if we get that chunk handled, then there's a, you know, there, we've gotten a huge amount of time, um, dealt with in the budget workshops. Um, because a lot of our time in the past has been trying to hammer out who's, who's doing what, and whether they're being paid, and where are they being paid this and what. So we're hoping that, that it'll help us be more efficient, not only in the budget process, but in the managing process throughout the year. So that's kind of the direction that we're, we're going to head. Because as I related, I said, you know, if we're gonna meet for a month, fine, great with that, but I, I want us to make it the most productive month of the year for figuring out strategically planning for the county and what, what direction we're taking.
I appreciate you saying that. And two, um, I know that Kim brought this to us and Greg as well, as manager, about the process of, of the evaluations. Uh, those instruments are in place, um, those evaluation instruments have been, been used. And, uh, I don't know that it's ever been done during, Ken. And I don't know that it's ever been done during that. And, and it's not something that's going to happen overnight. And, you know, Mr. Kelly in the conversation, the presentation he didn't see, you know, it points out all those things, is that you have some way of making a decision. How is public work? Is it somehow or the other that we can have a, a cost of living increase that's built in contingent on, on the county revenues? And then also the merits, you know, when folks go out and do that. As he's, as he said, I wanted to go into all that then, but, you know, we're having that conversation because our board needs to be able to speak and educate on that. So, I, I do that. And one of the things that really caught my attention, we, the tenure for some of us here now has been over two years. And what we really want to do is looking ahead, trying to get some of those county plans in place and, and everything that followed with that. We've gone and got ourselves waiting to do a comprehensive transportation plan and to do a county comprehensive plan. And that's all tied up in the political realm and via an NCMT, you know. I've been in conversation as has Greg with those folks about getting on the ball with that. And the way that should work, and it's behind the sky, I know, is that every decision made by every department head, everybody in the county government, decisions that you made physically, we can terminate the county plan. How is this going to change the county plan that you've got? That sounds so cliche, but it works. If you've got an idea about what you're going to be doing in the future, then you plan ahead for it instead of waiting for the future to come crashing in. So, I'm all for that and I hope, and I hope right now we can have some discussion about possible dates in that first week in March. I am, I am tied up on the seventh, eighth. And I don't think I'm going to be here Saturday. So, I'm open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of that week, the fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Greg, we're going on Wednesday, so we might go with Monday and Tuesday.
And that depends on your...
Get started if everybody else can.
How about you, Ms. Flot? Just whatever, just tell them, Ken.
It's Monday, the fourth.
And Tuesday, the fifth.
And your weekend schedule too, you think you can take two?
Take two sessions?
Or just come in early one morning?
Let's see, you talked to Greg, you know, about the presentation. Are we going to be able to tackle this issue of looking at the, the budget? At the same time, is this pay plan just melted too?
I would say we need to buy off the pay plan first and then start pulling the, you know, it, it'll take every bit of a whole day, I feel like.
For the budget.
To go through the pay plan.
The pay plan, okay.
And then what, whatever decisions you guys make about the pay plan will impact the stuff that I did on the budget side. So, it probably needs to be separated.
Okay, so we're shooting right now for the, for the pay plan. So, it's on Monday, the fourth, the fifth, let's see, or Monday, the fourth, and Tuesday, the fifth. Nine o'clock. Is that okay with everyone? Nine o'clock? Okay, so we'll go ahead and advertise that it's still open meeting on, on nine AM. Will it be here?
Yes, the fourth and the fifth, or just the?
Just the fourth, I believe. And then we must, I feel mighty put on the must, go ahead and start looking at the scheduling app for the budget process. And I don't know when that's going to be a good time, Ms. Flot.
Well, the, you know, the earlier the then, of course, what we'll have to do is once we get the pay plan in place, then Greg and I'll have to start getting with the department managers and whatnot.
See news at times.
So, there'll have to be some lag.
The pay plan and the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. But I'm hopeful that, you know, if, if we can pull in the school issue with what Lester and I worked out along with the pay plan, that's, that's over, that's about half a battle, right there.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm hopeful that mid-April, it will be really heavy duty into actually sitting down with the budget.
Okay. All right, do we want to go ahead and set a date in April then? Or do we just want to wait until we get the pay plan knocked out? Maybe we can make that date after the pay plan?
Yeah.
And so, how long would Greg and yourself need for it to get to the budget?
All right, so this will be the pay plan. And Manager Cable did give us a copy of that, by the way. If you don't have one from that, you know, what he's proposed. And I make sure you understand what's proposed, so we can have a look at that then. So, nine AM on Monday, the fourth, here for a work session on the pay plan. All right, is that three? We'll do one. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sanitation operations plan for the new proposed location. In order to finalize the permit, I had to redo our sanitation operations plan and, and just focus on the new location. It has been extended and, well, actually it says, hey, Kim, Troy and I reviewed the changes and find them adequate. So, they did want me to, I think there was one little change I had to make as far as the flow of the discharge not going into a, you know, our septic sewer, town sewer, it goes into a tank. So, that was the only change really that I had to make as far as the operations of the plan.
Now, that actually came by the office one day.
Yes, they did.
And talking like that, she's working hard on that as well.
And real excited, they're launching a partial recycling. I think it's February twenty-seventh. I put the twenty-second. Is it twenty-second?
Twenty-second, the twenty-seventh, I think, is Wednesday and that's the first day that you can bring, if you've been stocking up in your garage and you have a lot of stuff so you don't inundate the one-man site that's going to open, then allowing you to bring it to add the actual floor of the transfer station.
So, it'll be on a Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, twenty-seventh is...
That would be the twenty-second.
But the twenty-second, they're actually going to open up the manned, the one-man station. Yeah, Friday's out and Sunday.
Okay, and then on twenty-seventh?
They're opening up every Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, every Wednesday at like one-thirty or something. They will open up the floor in case you have a large amount of stuff and you want to bring it directly to the transfer station.
Bring it to the convenience.
The one that's going to be opening now.
Now, I will say, beginning the twenty-seventh on Wednesdays, you have half a day that you can bring household garbage, the regular stuff that you're doing now and to put on the floor across the scales. After twelve noon, they will no longer take it across the scales. They can put it in the green cans, which I have fixed a, and I had to put in the paper. David Dodson, I think, at the recycling meeting had also put something in the paper, Billy, am I correct? On the partial launch, I felt like it needed to come in just a little bit. I did have a typo on, on the copy that I gave you. I took out glass. They're not going to accept glass. That is the only thing that, that I brought off. But I tried to make it, no other garbage will be taken across the scales on this day. So, to try to keep down the confusion, you know, between the, the actual garbage and the recycling. So, that from now on, on Wednesday afternoons, from that point forward, they will work on that schedule.
And really, I know that there's been a lot, a lot of obstacles that have stood in the way of getting this off the ground, without a doubt. But David Dodson and of course, the committee, and I, I haven't been at all of them, but I've been all I can and Commissioner Orr as well. You know, we're excited about seeing this getting off because I think it's really going to take off.
I think it'll make better to not inflict a belated.
Yes.
Because if you saw it after, well, not though, you know, maybe.
Yeah. And, and two financially.
And they break this in, it gets people adjusted to it.
Yeah. It really will. I came up to Sweetwater Road, down Sweetwater Road, kind of meeting the seat, and there's two managers. And I just, I thought to my men, we're going to have to come to terms with that about finding a cockpit across the branch. Between sending out a truck, a man, and everything else, just have this brought to the floor. So, you know, those things are there. It's got me, by goodness, every time I go by that place, I'm looking up there. Oh, yeah. But I thought that's it. But we're excited about this launch and David Dodson and company. And I'm glad that you're going to be, I think you're probably going to be one of the non, first non-governmental folks on the committee, so it's always good to have that input, without a doubt. So, we're excited about it. It's a start. It's not all we've shot at. But one other thing I'll be quiet about this is that we have to get this thing up and going because I got emails from David Dodson about the recycle for grants. It's coming up very quickly and I don't know how you reapply. We've not been able to implement the first. So, you know, I think all the folks that have been involved with this on the grant, you know, the folks that have, that have left the grants realize what Grand County's having to do. And everything from power poles to everything else, so we're excited.
I will state further that Matthew McCombs with the Forest Service had sent a letter February fifteenth to Manager Cable in regards to the power services, you know, from the NEPA. So, we wanted to say that NEPA requires any action on public land, large or small, to go through this process. And this was, there is no extraordinary circumstances that they would give a wave or two. So, you do have to go through the NEPA process and that was the one major holdup as far as putting the, the little recycling centers at the sites that are located on Forest Service land.
The power.
But that is in your, in your packets as well.
And that's for a whole repower?
Yes, for one power pole.
Thank you.
One power pole, you can look for the, you can look straight at the train.
That's all I'll say.
All right, and I'm going to give you a reminder. We've had a change order on the fencing at the new transit facility. And I do have copies into, that I think, five that y'all have to sign, which we can do at the end. It's in the folder.
Okay, what's the reasoning for that?
The fencing that they had first proposed would not work. So, there had to be a change order taken care of through the architect and the contractor.
Okay, and that's in the budget?
Yes, right, yes.
Good.
And the transit facility is beautiful, they say. I'm still waiting to the grand opening to go completely through it, finished product. But I'm very pleased, you know, shout out to Ms. Colver. She's worked very hard. Her staff have been incredible. They moved themselves. I mean, they, you know, I just can't say thank you enough for those employees. And we should give praise and thanks to all of us, you know, all of them. But they actually, they worked hard.
And a great story shared too.
Yes. And that was by county employees.
I want you to know, that is nice. I went up there.
Yes.
I had to say, it's fair to round four and I would not have recorded the discussion.
Yeah, very nice.
Good folks, all the way around.
Strategic planning class for elected officials on March the seventh. If you would like to attend, just review that and let me know. It's a one-day workshop for local elected officials to, an opportunity to walk through a strategic cycle of planning, implementation, and evaluation. It's something through the school of government and...
It's at the Harper Reed, isn't it, the National? I will attend that.
Thank you.
Since I, we are looking right now at doing a strategic plan with the travel. It's coming in a public conference.
I wonder if they can be able to assist for a vulnerable lady.
It is, this course is designed for new and experienced municipal county members, county commissioners. Other members of the government team, including managers, clerks, attorneys, are welcome to attend.
I think that if somebody that's traveled tours could, they can. I think it'd be good if he does have the time.
He's, I'd say, he'd be great. Okay, and, and then we move on to the new and old business. I did have, oh, I'm sorry. I'm doing it.
You are.
Hold on, just a moment. Public records amendment. I have a public request this morning that is very extensive. In our public request policy, it has a limit of thirty days. I'm requesting that we change that amendment to read, "The custodian of the public records shall respond to all requests for examination and copying of public records as promptly as possible as by state statute. The size of the request will determine how promptly the custodian can provide the information." Attorney Coe, does that sound?
That's correct. It's, it's to be, it's, you're supposed to provide the information as soon as is reasonable possible. Give you the nation, the information of the request and, and the amount of information you request.
And I'd like to also follow up with that because I've done this stand before and it's everybody's right to have public records. I want that to clarify. But one of the things too is, is that our staff with this county is not responsible for compiling any.
You don't, you don't have to create, if the ask for record that doesn't exist, the county doesn't have to create that record in order to compile that request.
That's where, that's where it gets to the issue of time consumption. On the assumption that you have to put a document together, a polycard, this and this order, and this and this order, and this and this order. Everybody has a right to come in and request specific documents.
And the thing is, they also, the person that makes the request, if it's something that doesn't have to be redacted.
Right.
That, you can let them come in and make their own copy.
Yeah.
They can simply get their own copy so the staff's not tied up with it.
Well, and, and I have another question about this. This request has come in, and do we go around and change our policy?
You, you can't change, and he said by state statute.
Who said?
This, this Ben Haynes is the one that requested it.
Okay.
And he requested it per state statute. So, there is no limitation in North Carolina. Not that we're not going to immediately begin on it. He wants an index of computer databases compiled and or created by Grand County. So, that means forever and a day, everything. But we will, will, we will.
Now, send that to me.
That's everything that we have in our computer systems.
What's the link?
By law, we were supposed to have an index in nineteen ninety-eight.
Did we have computers like that in there?
And we had a couple. I had one at the election board at that time.
Sure, okay.
Yeah. In nineteen, and I apologize, I'm, I had it with me. I think it is in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, they gave the counties, they actually told the counties to do an index of this data. Every county, talking to the attorney at the school of government today, stated, most counties didn't do it because of the cost. And they didn't have to do it until they were requested to have to give up this public record. This will mainly be a lot of IT. And it's going to require a lot of work. But, I mean, we can do it, but we're a one-man staff in our IT. And he wants everything that's, you know, as by law approved as the index. So, we have to supply it.
But did you say that we can ask him, I think Donna said that he can?
I don't know, but he can get on our main server to go get.
Is that just, I, I, I may have not understood the database request. Is that what they just said, just the operating systems?
Well, if, no, it's, I think it's going to be index of everybody that's on it and of the, of the programs that you use and stuff. I'm not sure. I, I told Kim today that Taylor's unit needs a book of this because it makes me, it makes my head hurt to try to understand all the, that they're talking about. And I think for an IT person, it won't sound as complicated as it does.
That's, that's all it is. Ours is done. We had to do it for credit. And it's not a big deal. He came through in about thirty minutes and done with ours.
But it's something that we were supposed to have done in the past, but we didn't really have computers, so we really...
And he updated ours manually, so.
So, it's just something we have to do.
Because he has to sign off the statement that he's done it and everything annually for us.
We just have to do that.
It does that when you type it, okay.
Okay, let's see. Now, let me get this straight. It says that once, request again, is there a letter request?
Yes, there is a letter.
And then it says, what, database?
It's a, it's...
The index of data.
An index of computer databases, and, and that is in the law.
Databases.
Compiled and or created by Grand County.
Databases. Just databases.
A list of data fields, a description of the format or record layout, information as to the frequency with which the database is updated, a list of any data fields to which public access is restricted, a description of each form in which the database can be copied or reproduced using the agency's computer facilities, and a schedule of fees for the production of copies in each available form. Because we are acting in the public interest, we will use the materials to educate the public and are a nonprofit media organization. We would request a fee waiver for any and all materials following within this record's request. However, we will pay the risk... However, we will pay the reasonable cost associated with this request as outlined in the North Carolina Public Records Law one thirty-two, six-two, for reasons for copies.
Is this an audit?
No, this is from the Carolina Public Press. And it says if our request is denied...
You have to clear it with those, don't you?
Well, you justify, we will never deny a public records request.
Never.
And as far as closed minutes, I want to note that we, this board and the previous board had begun opening the closed minutes once they would not frustrate the purpose any longer. So we are opening them as we go now.
Right.
So, you know, we're trying.
Yeah.
But we will never deny public records requests.
Right, okay. Well, we'll just have to get our IT person, our whole department person to have a look at that. Less is hard. I would not want to have that for one board.
Well, I said it made my head hurt, but I knew, I knew, it might tell I want the to talk about it, like, because he don't actually know what they're talking about. But I told Kim, I said, it makes me just, I'm screaming.
Right.
And so I said, Taylor has to read it. I said, Taylor screams, we're going to worry.
Yeah. Well, Junior was, was very kind of unnerved, so I became unnerved.
Well, if there is an index, that means that there's a, there's a source, there's a source file or someplace that they just go get.
They'll have to build.
Okay, that's right. They'll have to build it.
And it will have to build it for us.